Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting, December 9th at 6:00 PM 2020. We'd like to ask our superintendent to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have one change in the meeting agenda. That will be H1. We'll move on to Staff and Students Recognition. The music students, Mr. Polera.
The New York State School Music Association, NISMA, is the largest, most successful affiliate of the National Association for Music Education in the United States. NISMA is a professional organization that evaluates student musicians in New York State from elementary to high school. Each spring, over 100,000 students register through their music programs to attend NISMA festivals where they perform a prepared solo for judges. High school students use their NISMA scores, along with teacher recommendations, to apply for acceptance into one of the eight All-State Performance Ensembles, as well as the highly competitive All-National Honor Ensembles. This achievement is not only a culmination of the students' hard work and dedication, but also a direct reflection of our music teachers' commitment and perseverance towards excellence. Please join me in congratulating the following Ward Melville musicians. And when I call your name, if you're here, please come up. For Allstate, Emily Bousa. Jessica Leal. Grace Lynn. Olivia McBride. Jonah Pitchler. Ava Williamson. And Emily Zulo. And a very special congratulations to our All-National Member, Stephen Fontana. How are you doing, Stephen? Thank you. Okay.
Do we have to stand apart?
If we can come a little bit closer, that would be good. And even if we stagger, maybe we have a front and back. And then... Right. That's in ten minutes. Okay. Perfect. So you guys are going to all hold up your certificates? If you wouldn't mind just kind of going this way a little bit, and then we'll go towards Moms and Beds. That way. Maybe then look over this way towards Moms and Beds. That's right.
Congratulations to all. We are extremely proud of this major accomplishment. Kudos to you. I'd now like to introduce our Executive Director of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Athletics, Mr. Kevin Finerty.
It is an honor to be here tonight to present an award to a person who is well-known and respected in our district, particularly in the area of health, physical education, recreation, and athletics. Each year, the Council of Administrators and Supervisors recognizes a select few highly skilled school administrators from Nassau and Suffolk Counties with an Administrator of the Year Award. CAS represents over 1,400 administrators and 77 school districts across Long Island. Last year, Christina Driscoll and I wrote supporting letters and nominated Maureen Cost for this award. Mrs. Cost has been an educator for almost 30 years in our school district. She began her career as a health teacher at Ward Melville High School and has been our secondary chairperson for health and physical education since 2012. During Mrs. Cost's career here in Three Village, she has devoted her time as a coach, advisor, and a mentor to many teachers, coaches, and administrators as well. Mrs. Cost is an outstanding leader. She cares about her students and staff. She has worked relentlessly over the years to improve and promote our department. Mrs. Cost not only dedicates a lot of her time to improve student learning at Three Village, but also on the state level. She is very well-respected amongst her peers for her knowledge and experience. She has participated and involved in numerous workshops, presentations, and discussions, both at the local and state levels. Not only does she do an outstanding job for our physical and health education department, but she's never afraid to get her hands dirty with other responsibilities. At a blink of an eye, she steps in to assist our coaches, secretary, security guards, custodians, maintenance, and so on. In the world of health and physical education and athletics, there are many tasks that need to be completed throughout the day and the year. Even though sometimes it's not in her job description, she rolls up her sleeves, steps in, and helps out for the greater good of our students and department. Mrs. Cost is a great colleague, teammate, and friend. I hold her knowledge, experience, and trust in high regard. Our health, physical education, recreation, and athletic department would not be where it is today without her help, guidance, and leadership. For all these reasons, we know Mrs. Cost would be a very worthy candidate for this award, and I'm very proud to say she earned it. I believe I could speak for our entire district, community, and our students and staff that have greatly benefited from all of Mrs. Cost's hard work over the years. And now, I am happy and much honored to present the Administrator of the Award to Mrs. Cost.
Maureen, we could not be more proud of you.
Now, I'd like to present two awards our high school athletic program earned from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association from the 2019-2020 school year. Before I present these awards, I'd like to thank our Board of Education, Mrs. Pedicich, and our Central Office for your continued support. Your support, resources, and commitment to our student athletes helped maintain and promote a great, successful athletic program. I would like to especially thank you for supporting our current offseason workouts. Our student athletes have been exercising, training, and working with their coaches and teammates since September. Even though these workouts are limited and not the same as our normal practices, I can share with you how happy, motivated, and enthusiastic our students and coaches have been the last two months. Our student athletes have been able to safely participate again in athletics with their teammates and coaches and have a sense of normalcy back in their lives. Thank you again for supporting our athletes, coaches, and teams. I'm not 100% certain how sports will look come January and which sports will be allowed to play or not, but rest assured, our athletes and coaches will be prepared either way. And now, the first award I'd like to present is the Sportsmanship Promotion Program Award. The Sportsmanship Program Award is designed to assess how schools are promoting positive sportsmanship within their athletic departments. Based on our proactive approaches and keeping sportsmanship in the forefront of students, coaches, spectators, and our community, we received this award. Lastly, but not least, is a very important award in my eyes. Last school year, Ward Melville earned the New York State Scholar-Athlete Team School of Distinction Award. This award is earned when 100% of our athletic varsity teams had earned Scholar-Athlete Team status during their prospective sports seasons. In order for a team to qualify for a Student-Scholar-Athlete status, 75% of our teams must have a GPA of 90 or above. I'm very proud to say all of our teams last year earned Scholar-Athlete status, and thus, we earned the School of Distinction Award. As academics are a priority in our district, I want to congratulate all of our student athletes for their hard work in the classroom and at home. I would be remiss if I did not thank our parents, teachers, and coaches, who were the ones pushing our students to do their best in and out of the classroom. Again, congratulations to all tonight, and I'm honored to be here as our district's athletic director, and I thank you for our continued support. These are our two awards. The School of Distinction Award and our Sportsmanship Promotion Award.
Very impressive, and thank you, Mr. Finerty, for your leadership as well. And thank our parents and our athletes and our teachers and coaches. We know that our students are up very, very early in the morning, so if at this point you would like to leave, we won't be insulted. Of course, you are welcome to remain for the remainder of the meeting, but if you would like to depart at this point, please feel free to do so. Thank you, and congratulations again. Very proud.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to the first public participation, up to 30 minutes in length. The first person we have is Riley Meckley. Riley?
My name is Riley Meckley, and I would like to ask the board, are you aware that our school offers, in addition to Italian, French, and Spanish, we have four levels of American Sign Language, more commonly referred to as ASL? I am here to talk to you about how ASL can easily lead to college credit for students at our school. Whether it is language interpretation, deaf awareness, or future career opportunities, ASL has become extremely popular. In fact, in New York, you are 100 times more likely to encounter a person with hard-of-hearing opposed to someone who speaks French and Italian, who speaks only French or Italian. This trend to learn ASL is only growing, and enrollment is soaring on college campuses. As of this year, over 150 campuses accept ASL as meeting their world language requirements, including state universities and private schools, just to name a few, Northeastern, Holy Cross, and even MIT. Many Ivy League schools also accept ASL into their world language program, such as Harvard, Yale, and UPenn. Trust me, I did my research on this. At Ward Melville, we have amazing language programs, offering classes in Spanish, French, and Italian to get college credit, but sadly, ASL is left out. But it doesn't have to be. We already have an established partnership with Stony Brook University for those languages. Why not ASL? Stony Brook offers two ASL college credit courses for high school students. We should be taking advantage of this, since we already have this paid partnership program in place. I am also 100% convinced that if students and parents knew ASL at Ward Melville would lead to college credit, they would encourage their students to enroll in American Sign Language. Course selection is in two months. We must get started on this immediately. On behalf of all ASL students, please, please, please consider this request. I would also like to say a special thank you to my sign language teacher, Mrs. Preston, who is watching this online. So, thank you, and thank you to the amazing language chair we have.
Ms. Meckley, would you just hold on one moment, please? So, in the spirit of the student recognition that we've been doing this evening, Jeff, could you tell us something interesting about Ms. Meckley?
Sure. It's a coincidence that you happen to be here tonight. My American Legion Post sends out a weekly newsletter, and in today's, it had the results from the Suffolk County level of the oratorical contest, which was held this past Saturday, and Riley took first place. So...
Yes. Thank you.
Now, last year, Riley made it into the state finals, and even though, as a junior, she was competing against seniors. So, we know you're going to do great. So, congratulations on that.
And Riley, I just wanted to say, as a former language chair in the district, I want to congratulate you for promoting ASL, because it is such an important language for students to study. I think it's also a great idea, we'll speak with Mrs. Galini, as far as, you know, broadening the partnership with Stony Brook University and the courses that they offer for our students in Ward Melville. So, congratulations on that and on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also have a handout I would like to hand to Ms. Pedicich, just about the class that is offered at Stony Brook.
Sure.
And you can pass that out to the board members.
I will definitely do that.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. Riley, thank you, and thank you, as Mr. Vizzo has said, for your advocacy. And Mr. Scanlon and I will talk about this, and we will follow up. You have our word.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Riley. The next participant is a letter that was submitted from Tracy Harris. Board of Education, Ms. Pedicich and Cabinet, I'm addressing you today in reference to what happens when the school district is designated in the yellow zone and is required to test 20% of the staff and students that are in person. Please do so in a way that keeps our students and staff safest. Please do not take the easy way out when it comes to the health and safety of all of those that attend and work in the schools. We have been so lucky so far with no one becoming dangerously ill, to our knowledge. The zone designations take effect when the percentages of positives are becoming higher. A random testing of volunteers does not mean only staff and high school students get tested. This is not a true gauge of the safety in our schools. If, as it has been stated, cases are not spreading throughout our schools, then make sure the students and staff at all levels are being tested. Do not rely on the staff to be the 20%. Do everything you can to prove to the community that you are keeping all students and staff safe without finding loopholes in the rules. Please continue to keep our precious students and dedicated staff healthy and safe. Regards, Tracy Harris.
I just like to respond. First of all, I want to reiterate that our district is not in a yellow zone. We are not in the cusp of the yellow zone, and we will not be taking any shortcuts or compromise the safety of our schools, most especially our students and staff. Our district is well-prepared to implement testing that is in adherence with the DOH and legal guidance, and we are fully apprised of all requirements and will implement procedures with fidelity and transparency. I want to assure the community of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. And the next letter is from Stephanie Warner. In accordance with Governor Cuomo's mandate for schools that are deemed local in a designated yellow zone, I share my concerns regarding how the Three Village Central School District will execute the required 20% testing of in-person staff and students. There have been several discrepancies pertaining to the reporting of positive COVID-19 cases throughout the district, most specifically regarding dates of infection, dates of attendance in school buildings, and enforced quarantines. The question of complete transparency and proper identification of close-proximate contacts is worrisome, particularly when it comes to parents receiving email notifications for cases related by two to three weeks. With inevitable needs for testing in schools as cases continue to increase across Long Island, our open status is contingent upon the proper execution of reliable protocol. This plan is reliant upon a survey sent out to parents and staff members inquiring about the willingness to be tested in school. Apprehension amongst parents is obvious, particularly amongst those with elementary-age children. In the community, there is uncertainty regarding how the volunteers will be chosen. It is expected that the sampling of subjects by representative of the district as a whole to ensure a valid barometer by which to judge our true infection rate. Individuals must be chosen from each school, maintaining an equitable distribution of students and staff as is possible, and all the findings must be reported to the community in a timely manner. If a disproportionate number of staff members are tested, results will be skewed, offering a misrepresentation of our infection rate. I sincerely hope that the administration and the Board of Education are amenable to compliance with a fair and equitable COVID-19 testing strategy that reflects not only a desire to remain open, but a commitment to the health and safety of our students, staff, and community at large.
Thank you, Mr. Mano. I'd like an opportunity to respond to the statements, as the assertions are not factual. I can assure the school community that we are responding and reporting information on positive COVID cases as quickly as we are able to verify the information reported. We will not report positive COVID cases without full verification. We take this process very seriously and will continue to proceed with the diligence and respect to the privacy of our families and staff. While we understand that reporting may seem delayed, this is as a result of confirming all requisite data and should not be construed as the district's efforts to prevaricate on information shared with our school community. It is also important to note that changes in the Department of Health procedures require the district to identify all close contacts when reporting a positive COVID case. This was not the procedure a few weeks ago. This process requires thorough investigation and accuracy and is done as rapidly as possible to assure the safety of all. While it may appear that we are late in reporting data based on how long an individual is not in school or at work, it's important to note that in many cases, these individuals have been quarantined, as they have previously been identified as a close contact. In addition, we are proud of our staff and families that are remaining home or keeping their children home pending the results of a COVID test. We have been noting that those quarantined as close contacts are coming up positive in days 10 through 13. This is concerning, given that the CDC has recommended lessening the days of quarantine. However, the New York State Department of Health has not yet changed the guidelines to align with the CDC recommendations. There is no doubt that there is an increase in the number of cases, which is reflective of both regional and state data. In the majority of all cases reported in our district, the transmission has been community-acquired. As repeatedly stated by our governor and the DOH, schools are safe, and it is incumbent on all of us to continue to work collaboratively together to follow all health and safety protocols so that our schools remain open. With regard to following protocol, should we enter into a yellow zone, as previously stated, we will follow all requisite procedures as provided by DOH and legal guidance. Thank you.
Ingraham, I have a comment also. So, I'd just, I would like to follow up on that and just share my observations as, you know, as a citizen member of the school board, I want to just share my observations and share them with the community of what I see. So, I think that the comments from this letter and other inquiries you've received, I think are reflective of a general anxiety that people feel, especially as the infection rate is clicking up in the community. And they point out that, in this letter, I think somebody pointed out that some of the reporting may not have been accurate. You know, the process of contact tracing is very complex and difficult, and it's an imperfect art. It's very hard to do it with 100% accuracy. Masks, the use of masks, do not provide 100% protection. Handwashing does not provide 100% protection. The use of wiping down surfaces, maintaining a six-foot distance, all of the various protocols that we do, even a vaccine, the best vaccines are 90, what, 95% maybe? So, what we've done, though, is we've adopted these layered protocols, each one that has been executed as well as possible by well-meaning people who are trying their best. And although we understand that's why we have so many of these redundant protocols that support each other, because none of them are going to be perfect, but all in all, I think the fact that our staff, our administration staff, brings thousands of kids, semi, you know, kids, I mean semi-compliant into a building, thousands of kids in and out of these buildings every day, and the infection rate here, because we can see it based on the contact tracing, is lower than it is in the community, I can tell you, at least from my standpoint, and I'm, you know, I mean, look, all of us board members, we ask questions, we're on top of it. I think I'm speaking for all of us. We're very comfortable and very appreciative with the protocols that have been enacted and the results that you guys are getting, because I know that the safety of our children is paramount for you, and we appreciate you. So, thank you.
And I just would like to add that I, the one thing I disagree with is that "we've been lucky so far" was one of the sentences in there, and I disagree completely. We have not been lucky so far. This has been hard work, long hours, just a work ethic that we all should be proud of this district, and the endless tireless hours that is put in. No one is perfect, mistakes happen, absolutely, typos. This is not the end of the world, but this district has kept all our students and our children in school five days a week. Does anybody know of another district that's not on hybrid and from day one, 100% in school, with the option, if not comfortable, you can be on remote, which is great? So, it's, we are not lucky. We work extremely, extremely hard, this administration and everyone and every staff member and teacher and so on. Just a comment.
Moving on to minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from November 18th? Ms. Gish, Mr. Vizzo, all in favor? Approved? Okay, the motion passes. For reports, next, we have B, Student Representative Port, Jessie.
Good evening. Happy December. A couple of new things since November. I do want to make you aware of some student concerns. We are hopeful you can provide communication to the students with clarity. We know there's a lot of unknowns. We are seeing other schools on the island shutting down, hearing rumors about our district possibly shutting down, and even seeing some of our classmates fall ill to COVID. I myself did not take the sage advice of Mr. Cornreich, and while it was negative, I did have to spend two weeks quarantined. Given all that we hear and all that we see around us, it would be helpful for students to have more information on the following topics. Are there a certain number of cases in the school that would cause us to shut down? Does the school have a policy or number, or is it the same as the states? If we are in the yellow zone, what does that mean for our school? Will we go online, and how far away are we? If 20% of the school population does not volunteer for testing, who will determine if we get tested or not? Also, the CDC did change their guidelines for quarantining, and will we change our guidelines to follow theirs? And for some more festive news, there are a lot of events taking place around Ward Melville leading up to the winter break. Student government is running a school-wide food drive for Meals on Wheels. Walking through the halls of Ward Melville, you can see doors decorated for the holiday door decoration contest run by Key Club. The Electric Light Parade will be held at Ward Melville this Sunday. I encourage everyone to come. And there will be random student selection... And there will be random students selected to play any holiday music they want, give a shout out to a friend, or even play their own instrument between periods on the loudspeaker the final day before break. That was actually Riley's idea over there. So if anyone has any questions about the student concerns or why I will play if I'm randomly chosen, I will be happy to answer. Thank you.
I, Jessie, I'm happy to answer some of your questions. So hopefully I haven't missed any of them, but if I have, you'll fill me in. So whether Ward Melville would shut down, one of the reasons why we as a school district have not been shutting any of our buildings when individuals are, come up positive, whether they be staff or students, has to do with the six feet. That is very important to the Department of Health, perhaps more important to them than the issue of masks. So all of our students at all times are six feet apart in their classrooms, obviously moving through the hallway, but that is for less than 10 minutes. So other school districts we know have shut down because their students in their classrooms are not six feet apart. Our students are. That was one of the caveats that our Board of Education advocated for, that our administration advocated for, and the district has spent a great deal of time and effort and money to make sure that classes are kept at a certain size so that students are six feet apart. So in terms of shutting the school down, I hope that that would not happen. At this point, the DOH has not indicated to us that there is a need to do that. We are not on the cusp or designated at this point as a yellow zone. Should we be designated as a yellow zone, we will have three days in which to implement testing, which is the reason for the willingness to test survey that was sent out to all of our families and our staff. Tomorrow, there'll be another message for those who indicated a willingness to test, a consent form to say, yes, I consent to testing should we be in a yellow zone. These are all preparatory so that we are prepared should we have to implement testing and do so immediately. All of our school nurses and our EMTs have been trained in the testing procedures. We also have fitted them for N95 masks, and they will be in full gear and very capable of doing the testing here. We understand the anxiety, especially of young children. We did not include our pre-K children in the testing. We don't want to be terrorizing our youngest children, and obviously mom and dad cannot be there for the testing. At this point, the number of people that have expressed a willingness to test is 2,491 people. Whether that will change or not, I don't know with the consent. Of those, we need approximately 1,200, which is 20% of our in-person staff. So we are well within where we need to be. I have great confidence in our community and the support that will, should we enter into that zone, we would do that over a two-week period of time. And if the positivity rate is less over that seven days, then we can remain open. If not, we continue to test, but we still are allowed to remain open in a yellow zone. So hopefully that answers your question. There was, I believe, over 50% of parents who said that they would have their children tested grades K through 12, and staff was over 70%. So I think our community has come together and said, you know, we want our schools open, and we will support you should you enter into that zone. And so with regard to the CDC, the CDC has come up with their quarantine guidelines, which is seven days if you get a negative test and 10 days if you don't get tested. However, the New York State Department of Health has not adopted those new quarantine rules, and as I stated in my statement, we are a little concerned because we are seeing people who are quarantined at this point coming up positive in days 10, 11, 12, and 13. So that is somewhat concerning to us, and I would rather that, not that I have any jurisdiction over the New York State Department of Health, but I hope that they operate in a prudent manner in giving consideration to this because at this point, we, anybody who is quarantined at the secondary level, as you know, will go remote, which is easy enough for us to do. And at the elementary level, we are providing home tutoring for those children who do need to go remote and have to be taught during quarantine. So I hope I was able to answer your questions.
Yeah, you did. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Jessie. Onto our next report, Staff Wellness. Ms. Rakowski?
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me to come and speak about a program that I am very passionate about. Gary's already here to help me. This is, thank God, that's all I could say. Yeah. This happens every day in my life in Wellville. Every day. And thank God for the IT department, because if it was up to me, I would have a rotary phone, and I still write checks. So thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. Anyway, before I get into telling you a little bit about Wellville and how Wellville was born, I just want to introduce you to some of the staff there. That's me, obviously. I am Debbie Rakowski, and I am the staff social worker at Wellville. This year, I'm lucky enough to have two interns, one who came back for a second term, Ariana and Stephanie, they're both from LIU, they are getting their master's in social work, but they bring to the table some other really wonderful qualities. Both of them are registered dietitians and nutritionists, and Ariana is a certified yoga instructor, and she's also a certified health coach. So they offer many, many programs to the staff in Three Village free of charge. There's a story behind this picture, but I'll get to that in a moment. So Wellville was born in 2019, but the concept of it came up probably in about 2014. At the time, I was at Murphy Junior High School, best job ever as a school social worker there, and I'd been there for about 25, 30 years. And I noticed that what started to happen was we were doing a lot of programs for kids, but I was starting to have more and more staff come in and speak about some of the stressors that they were feeling, and talking about not only things at school, but things at home, and really having a lot of anxiety. And they felt that there was no place for them to really talk about this. And I started to put together a very little program. We took one of the lunchrooms at the faculty rooms that wasn't being used, we kind of made it very zen, and I made something called the Winter Wellness Series, where we invited in different practitioners and taught staff during their lunch break how to handle things like anxiety, how to manage stress. We brought in acupuncturists, we did a drum circle, thanks to Vinnie, because Vinnie said, whatever you want to do, bring them in. And the staff went wild. They loved it. And they started saying, we need this, we need more of this, absolutely. So then in 2018, I wrote the proposal for Wellville, and I presented it to Cheryl and all of you lovely people, and I have to say thank you so much because we were really able to make Wellville a possibility, and talk about timely, it really ended up being a wonderful thing. The story behind this picture is, in the beginning of the school year, I would take a picture of our guidance staff, our PPS staff. You know, the first day of school, everybody looks really good. Everyone's got their nice school clothes on, fresh haircut, everyone's a little tan. And then I would wait, and I would take another picture of us in December to see if there was any change. Invariably, there was a little bit of change going on. That's this year. We started out in September, by October, most people ended up looking this way. And of course, this is always one of my favorites, when people talk about the fact that teaching can be a little bit stressful. This is, this woman, she's 39, and she feels great. But it's not just teachers, it's all different staff members. And so the point that's very important about wellness in general is wellness is at the core of everything. It's the root of things. If your wellness is imbalanced, all of these other areas come together. And when people are struggling emotionally, or people are struggling financially, or socially, or spiritually, it trickles down and ends up affecting their wellness. And it's a very important thing for us to be educated on and to help people focus on. When you ask people how they're feeling, if you ask them, how's your health, oftentimes people can definitely have a conversation with you about it, sometimes a little bit too much information. They tell you about their back, they tell you about their stomach, they tell you all of these things. And health is really a state of body. Wellness is a state of being. And I think that's very important to mention, that it's not something that we spend a lot of time. If someone asked you how your wellness was, how many of you would really know how to answer that question? And this is something that I say very often to people, that self-care is a priority and necessity, not a luxury, in the work that we do. And I think people get that confused, because when they hear the word self-care, there's still some stigma attached to that. People think it's going for massages, getting manicures and pedicures, getting facials. Those are all wonderful things, and yes, they are part of self-care. But there's so much more, like taking time for yourself, making yourself first, creating boundaries, resting, eating well. All of those things are part of self-care. So what I did was I did a survey, I sent a survey out to the entire staff. I got back about 118, which is not bad, and I wanted to get you some raw data, because I know how important data is in places like this. So the respondents, out of those respondents, 57.9% have visited Wellville. And out of those respondents, 53.9% have participated in our programs. Here are some of the highly utilized Wellville programs. 80% of the survey respondents have participated in our workshops and Lunch and Learns. And 20% of survey respondents have utilized Wellville's individual and group counseling services. And I want to mention, people don't realize, they think sometimes Wellville's just a room, and it is a wonderful room. It has a lot of wonderful things in there. I asked Jeff about our great massage chair that spent some time in his office. Yes, the room is a very important piece of it, but there's so much more to it. It's the programming, it's the counseling. And I want to reiterate again, all programs and all counseling are free to any district employee. Here's some more raw data for you. The average time spent in Wellville is about 20 minutes. Now, I want to let you know, those times are almost always during staff's lunch period, during passing of the, you know, of classes sometimes, before school and after school. And I tell people often, it takes 10 minutes to create a state change in your body. So you can literally sit for 10 minutes, close your eyes, listen to the music, unplug, reset, and get yourself back to class. The average number of people who visit Wellville daily is about 14. I definitely have my regulars. They're wonderful, they come in often to spend a little time, and they've also become very close as well. The average number of times per week people visit Wellville is between two and three. The average number of people per workshop, now I want to point this out to you, this is pre-COVID. So when we have our Lunch and Learns or workshops, we had an average of about eight people. Once we went into quarantine, the number of people per workshop shot up to 16. And talking about crisis equals opportunity, one of the things that quarantine afforded us was the ability to reach more people, because Wellville is situated at Ward Melville High School. It's not always easy for other buildings to come to us. But during quarantine time, we were able to offer a lot of our workshops remotely, and people who were in other buildings were really able to take advantage of our services. The number of referrals given for outside counseling and resources, this is as of September 2019 to currently 71. That's referrals for outside counseling. One of the problems that came up during COVID and even now is that pretty much every therapist I know is booked solid, and they have long waiting lists, sometimes well into March. So that was a bit of a challenge to be able to help people find places that they can go. The number of staff using counseling services pre-COVID, eight to 10 weekly, and this number for me was very significant as well, the number of staff using counseling services during quarantine was 24 to 28 people weekly. Now, that number also continued throughout the summer, because good practices are that, you know, when June 24th comes, I don't just say, okay, have a nice summer, see you in September. So we continued a lot of those counseling services throughout the summer. The number of people using our check-in services during quarantine was about 36. I had individual groups for TAs, for staff, you know, sometimes we had a little group for security for some of the custodians, where they could feel comfortable to check in. Check in, I would say on a Thursday night on Zoom, we'll be on for an hour, it's like a drop-in where you can come and talk about, you know, how are you, what's happening? And then this is just from my own journal, in case anybody wanted to know, the average number of nights that I slept during quarantine was roughly about two. That's true. That's very true, Kevin. And again, here are some of the workshops in which we've offered, both in the past and present. I want to preface this by saying that many of the people, the service providers, oftentimes donated their time and were alumni, which was wonderful. And that's the good part about being in the district for over 30 years, they grow up, and then they all come back, so it's nice to be able to give back to the district. So I divided them up for you so you could see into Body, Mind, and Spirit, and I'll just read some of them for you so you have it. Also, in the original survey that I sent out before Wellville was Wellville, I asked staff members, what are some kinds of programming that you would like to see? And we were able to really deliver so many of those programs. We had benefits of acupuncture, fitness on the go, Pilates, yoga, naturopathic healing, the power of sleep, if only, Reiki, the brain-gut connection, Wellville Walkabout. If you noticed, we just got them put up in North Country, the Green Feet. I know some people were like, what's with the Green Feet? Jen Chmenti, our trainer, put them up in almost every building, and if you follow the path, it will, like I think in our building, if you go in Ward Melville, if you go around four times, it's a mile. So sometimes people before school, after school, even on their lunch, if they'd like to walk, they can. Boost Your Immune System, Healthy Holiday Food, which is always a big hit. Under Mind, we did Managing Anxiety Meditation, The Power of Vulnerability, Hypnotherapy, mindfulness, Ecotherapy, The Power of Puzzles, Sound Therapy. And then under Spirit, we did Cultivating Wellness, Healthy Relationships, Essential Oil Benefits, Creating Self-Love, which by the way, was a wonderful author that I reached out to, her name is Anne Boudreau, she wrote a great book, she lives in Georgia, and I just called her one day and I said, I loved your book, would you be interested in doing a program for us? And she said, absolutely, and it was, it was really wonderful via Zoom. Sound Bowl Healing, Winter Gardening, Vision Boards, and the Wellville Book Club. I want to mention something about the book club, I think it's worth noting. This came out of some of the check-ins where people would talk, and I had read a great book, and I said, would anybody else be interested in reading this book? And nine of us, for the entire quarantine and up until now, continue to meet every week, and we have come, we have become inextricably connected as people. They're the most random people you could ever imagine being thrown together, and it's like we've known each other our whole lives. And that was really one of the wonderful things that came out of that. And here's some of the other offerings that Wellville has. We do in-person and remote workshops. We're really working on the remote part, again, thank you, IT, from the bottom of my heart. Lunch and Learns, I do a monthly newsletter, you have a copy of my December newsletter in your lovely parting gift of our Wellville bag. In-person and remote individual and group counseling, we continue with our weekly check-ins, the Wellville Walkabout. I've been going to faculty meetings at other buildings to try and talk more about self-care, and we have an upcoming podcast that we're really trying hard to work on as well, called The Wellville Connection. These are some pre-COVID pictures, obviously, of some of our workshops. As I said, the workshops were so well-attended. Right now, I know it's difficult, we're only letting between three and five people in for the workshops. So for some people, it's great, because they're getting very personalized programs. This is one of our holiday, healthy eating, and let me tell you, anytime you offer food, it gets packed. And both of my interns are phenomenal cooks, and they make all this wonderful, healthy food for us. And then I just put on some of the staff comments that I thought were important. I literally did this, it was completely random, what I pulled out, but some people have said, Wellville has literally saved my life. Thank you, Three Village, for seeing the value in self-care and giving us Wellville. Wellville is absolutely incredible, although I can't get there often, I value its services and feel better knowing it's here. Such a great place to go and de-stress, which is what we need during these crazy times. Thank you for trying hard to come to other buildings, loved when you were here. We love and appreciate Wellville. The yoga and nutrition workshops are amazing. And I had a lot of teachers say this, and I felt like this was important to add. My regular check-ins to Wellville really helped me reset and be a calmer, clearer- and be a calmer, clearer, clearer and better teacher when I got back to my classroom. And I think that that's super important. I also want to mention to you that we have had many newspaper articles written about Wellville. We're pretty much the only ones, I'd say, in the United States, actually, given the number of phone calls I still get from all over, actually even Canada, and I did speak to someone in Switzerland. Not many people have a dedicated space and this kind of connection and workshop for their staff. So I'm very proud to be a part of that. And I have to say that, you know, I thank all of you for that because without your support, we wouldn't really have this. So thank you so much, and I'd be open to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. I remember when this was first proposed, and we were all a little confused. But now, you know, now that we see it and we hear about the effects and, you know, the kinds of connections you're making between teachers and the way you're supporting teachers, it seems so strange to me that this isn't like a normal thing to have at every school district. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And thank you, Jonathan. You know, it's interesting that you say that because when I get phone calls from other districts, they say to me, how do you guys do it? Like, how do you do it? And I always say that because of the buy-in of the administration, that is so important. Because once the administration supports it, then the teachers feel that it's something to use, that they're not ashamed to say, I need help.
Right. And you know, it's not expensive.
No.
For the amount of support that it creates and gives to the teachers. It's, I mean, for an institution of our size, just to have this one little amenity to support our teachers in this way, it's a no-brainer.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Debbie is an incredibly humble person. I need to say that. I've known Debbie for over 30 years. We've worked together in many different capacities. And when she first brought this to our attention, I was excited, very excited, because I knew that it would be successful because of Debbie. And that has come to fruition. But if you look at large corporations, top 500 companies across the United States, they all have these programs in place for their staff. But school districts don't. And so this idea, this initiative, was Debbie's. And she deserves so much credit because it has helped our staff tremendously, especially during this period of time when we're dealing with a pandemic and everybody is anxious. Our teachers want to be there. Our staff want to be there for our students. But we're all dealing with so many issues, both internally and externally. And Debbie has been nothing short than amazing and really deserves a major round of applause. And I give her so much credit.
Thank you. I'm very grateful. Thank you. It's been wonderful for me, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. Moving on to our next item for board discussion is policy. Ms. Gish? Mrs. Gish?
Okay. I'm just trying to get my technology going here. Okay, red light on. Okay. The Policy Committee met. And I want to first of all, thank Dr. Baum and Erin Connolly for attending and helping us go through the policies during your packet. Do you want to go through them one by one? Okay. All right. The first one, we went through with student records. Are there any questions on this one? Okay. Student health services. Some of these changes are really changes in statute. And that's why we had to change the wording. It may look like it's just very slight changes, but they're important. Public use of school facilities. Any question on that? Parental involvement. Student attendance. Homeless children. Again, these are changes that the law has changed every year. Admission of non-resident students. Student health services. Student records. Computer resources and data management and child abuse in an educational setting. That one adds some new people to the list of required people who are required to report many issues.
Mandated reporters.
Mandated reporters. Any questions? That you want this to be the first reading? Or should we move it to the second reading?
Second reading.
Second reading. We would need a motion to do that.
Okay. So a motion to, we're going to do a second reading on this?
Second reading.
Okay. Mr. Viso, second. Ms. Gish, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure. You want a second reading? Or you accept?
Yes. This is the second reading.
So they're accepted as.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. And moving on to items for board action. E, approval of consultant to the Anti-Racism and Social Justice Task Force. Yes, please.
The district, as you may be aware, has established an Anti-Racism and Social Justice Task Force. There will also be building-level committees. And we have contracted with a consultant. And I'm extremely proud to tell you that it is Dr. Terrence Roberts. Dr. Roberts is a civil rights leader and author. He was one of the Little Rock Nine, a group of African-American students who in 1957 were the first Black students ever to attend classes at Little Rock Central High School in Little Rock, Arkansas. In 1999, Dr. Roberts was awarded the Congressional Gold Medal by President Bill Clinton. And since that time, he has served as the Assistant Dean in the UCLA School of Social Welfare and is currently principal of the management consulting firm, Terrence Roberts. His experience, his knowledge, and his skills are invaluable. And we are so proud and honored to be able to work with Dr. Roberts. So I thank the board for their support.
Kevin? Mr. Connors? Mr. Cornreich, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Letter F, adoption of retention and disposition schedule for New York State local government records. This is Kathy.
The state has directed us to switch our records retention schedule that we follow. And the board just needs to adopt it in order to affect.
Kevin, motion? Ms. Gish? Mr. Cornreich, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. G, approval of the date for the 21, 22 Board of Education organizational meeting? Mr. Cornreich, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. H, 20, 21, 22, new courses and course name changes request. That is, Kevin?
We have only two courses this year that need to be changed due to our affiliation agreement with the ACE program. So this is what this member was reflecting, those were changes.
Okay. Mr. Cornreich, Mr. Viso, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. And the change in the meeting agenda, each one. That is the item that we spoke about in executive session. Mrs. Gish, Mr. Cornreich, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Bid extension renewal?
Oh, by the way, the reason the massage chair was in my office is because it was paid for by one of our vendors, and it was shipped here to my attention during the summer while the room at Ward Melville was being put together. So it stayed here until the room was ready, just so you know.
You broke it in, right?
No, it would have been broken. So, no. All right. This bid is for cesspool cleaning and tank pumping, the same company. Yeah, well, no, that we have here. No, I'm just kidding. We were going to do bumper cars in the courtyard, but they haven't been put in yet. I know, right? Yes. Cesspool cleaning and tank pumping with the same terms and conditions as the current year.
Mr. Connors? Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Motion passes. Okay. So J, approval, extension of agreement with Town of Brookhaven for sand, salt, and general repairs?
We do this every year. This is in the event of an emergency, and we need additional salt, which, well, we haven't needed it yet, but we always have it in place.
Dr. Kerman, Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Acceptance of donations?
We have several donations. We have a donation of 500 face masks from the Chung family, which went to Mount Elementary School. We have a check in the amount of $3,000 from the Three Village STEM and Richmond Foundation to the Ward Melville Science Olympia team. And then we have, what's on the agenda is a donation of $1,000 in gift cards from the Three Village Parents Alliance for the food pantry. However, since the agenda went out, that donation has ballooned to $5,000.
Wow.
And it's not just the Three Village Parents Alliance. There were several other groups that they were asked if we could just mention that were part of this. It was also the Three Village Electric Parade Holiday Committee, the Asian American Association of Greater Stony Brook, Stony Brook Archaeology. And this next one, I have to lower my mask, and you'll understand why in a second, because I want to make sure the name is clear, how I say it. It's a frisbee team known as the Three Village Mother Flickers. Didn't want that to come across muffled and sound wrong. And then two donations that will actually be on next month's agenda, but I just wanted to mention them tonight. One is a donation of $1,000 from Curry Schweibert, also for the food pantry. And we just received yesterday $5,000 in gift cards from our bus company, Suffolk Transportation.
Wow. Thank you so much. Yes, we do. Dr. Kerman, Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Motion passes. L, declaration of surplus equipment?
We just have one item. It's an old copier and printer in our SAC office.
Mr. Cornreich? Mr. Connors, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. We're going to move M through R, as stated on the agenda. Okay. Mr. Cornreich, Mr. Viso, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. S, approval of administrative internship for the North Country Administration?
Yes, this is as a result of Mr. Carlson accepting an intern in the business office.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cornreich? Ms. Bevelinka, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. T, approval of the agreement between the Three Villages Central School District and Three Villages Teachers Association and the employees named in the attached confidential schedule A.
So this is as a result of the names attached in Schedule A as adding additional one-year teachers.
Ms. Bevelinka, second. Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. So we're on U. Approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Three Villages Central School District and the Three Village School Administrators Association, adding new titles. Okay, Mr. Connors?
This is an MOA that provides an addition of titles to the collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Connors? Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. And the approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Three Villages Central School District and UPSU Maintenance and Operations Unit?
This is an MOA that addresses adding a title of custodial supervisor, provides district-wide stipends for those folks that are going to be helping us out district-wide, as well as a recalculation of an hourly rate.
Dr. Kerman? Mrs. Gish, all in favor?